Open comment period. Do we want to just briefly remind people what those rules are?
Yep, let me pull that up real quick.
And while you're doing that, I see the recording just started. So I will reiterate that we have a quorum and it's the May 27th Planning Board meeting.
Thank you, David.
Great. I know this is last minute to put those up. I probably most people have seen the rules before, but thank you, Jean.
Many times, I'm sure. Just to make sure, just to just to remind folks. Okay, are you seeing my screen?
Yes.
Fabulous. Okay. As usual, welcome to the Planning Board meeting. This meeting, we have certain protocol for these virtual meetings. And any activities that disrupt, delay, or otherwise interfere with the meeting are prohibited. We'll have a short open comment here in just a moment. And we will, you can use the raise hand function to let us know if you would like to address the board. We typically do three minutes each for those. We ask that folks use, please use a full name. And we are in the webinar format. So all of our board meetings and our get our special guests that are presenting will be using the video. But other folks will participate by voice only. The chat function should not be about comments or questions to the board. They should really just be about technical issues. You are welcome to email the board if you have additional questions or comments on this topic at Boulder Planning Board. Boulder Boulder Planning Board at BoulderColorado.gov. That's right. Okay, I think that's, that's the basics. And Lynn has mentioned open comment, but I'm seeing no, oh, good, there's Lupita. Let me put her in here. David, should we, do you want to open, open comment now?
Sure, let's go ahead and open the open comment. And Jean, if you would like to call on people on with their raised hands. I think we've seen that Liam and Data Adamson is in are both interested in speaking.
Great, okay. Lynn, you can go ahead.
I think that you need income levels for all of the people that are going to potentially be brought into Boulder by housing. That affordable housing that's demanded because the affordable housing creates with it a demand for more affordable housing. So if you can itemize on a scale of one to 10, the income levels of all the people involved, then you can actually do real planning. Because the way it's working now, you're chasing your tail. As we get more and more jobs and you accommodate them more and more with housing. And it's not deciphered which level of job it is. There is no such thing as work, workforce housing. It's levels of income housing. From the head. And you're just getting more and more of a problem all the time that then you have to accommodate for. And at the same time, you're required by the Boulder Valley Comp Plan to meet jobs, housing balance. And you're not because you haven't got the criteria to do it. You haven't got the data to do it and you aren't wishing at it in the correct way to be able to even do it. So to me, it just seems so implausible that, that you're not doing that. Why aren't you doing that? Why isn't there a discussion? Why do I come every single time and say the same thing? And no one even can even respond to me on an email and say, oh, Lynn, you're completely wrong because of this and that. No, like, just show some respect for your public to at least acknowledge that I've said something and if you disagree, disagree with it. But this is the problem that I see is there's no master plan. There's nobody at the wheel. You're reacting.
Lynn, we're getting a little, there's some feedback.
Constantly a reactionary thing that you're doing in response to the jobs, housing imbalance. It's not setting it up to be, thanks for nodding a little bit there. You're like acknowledging that I'm speaking. It would be nice to have some level of a dialogue somehow, some, sometime. But let's see what else I was gonna say. I think another thing that would be really useful is much more Marpa housing, Marpa style housing, because it uses a lot less square footage per person. And that translates to not having to go higher in the height limit. Thanks.
Thanks, Lynn. Okay, um, let's see. David, you're up. Let me just, there we go. David, you should be able to unmute.
Hello, lovely Planning Board members. Thank you so much for your service on this beautiful day when, when we'd all love to be outdoors. But beautiful topic today. And I, I hope we can get more members of the public to listen to this great presentation. I'm so glad that you're doing this and it'll be recorded, will be available for other people. I wanted to follow up on the Planning Board's end of season letter where they wanted to counsel, asking that it be a priority this year to try to actually implement the lovely infill pilot criteria that got into the main update. And that we've been trying to implement for several years. And you've, you've heard about it at, at other meetings as part of the midterm update. Unfortunately, we weren't able to pursue it in that venue. But there've been several expressions of interest in that by the Planning Board and by City Council, including their June 2nd, 2020 meeting. And I sent you all an email very via Cindy to acknowledge Charles Farrow's comment at the retreat in January that there wasn't a staff resources to do that. I think we disagree quite a large degree about the amount of staff resources that would be needed just to do a very modest pilot program with a lot of neighborhood volunteer, including expert volunteer assistance. And of course, we have a project all ready to go on North Street as we showed in that proposal for midterm update. So I, I would, I really just, I've emailed you all and I've emailed Jean and our Jean and Charles have discussed it. We certainly understand that the, the pressing problem for staff. And I'm just wondering if we could hear, you know, obviously not tonight, but what the situation is with ARPA funds. So just to maybe allocate a modest amount of the ARP, the $20 million the city of Boulder is going to get to address the problem that the, that the Boulder Valley Comprehensive Plan says is our number one problem, which is adding middle income housing. And I want to highlight the podcast in Strong Towns about strong suburbs. I've sent you a variety of you that. But this is a, an approach that empowers neighbors, empowers renters. And I think it would be very attractive across the, the, the housing spectrum. So I urge you to, to look at that. And I'd love to hear back from staff about how we can make it work for, for everyone. And I'd love to help, you know, provide the resources for us to follow up on that, that letter from Planning Board on the Infill Pilot Criteria, page 112 of the Comprehensive Plan. Thank you.
Thanks, David. Okay, I was able to fix the raise hand function, but if anyone else would like to address the board, please let us know. Either using the raise hand function or you can message me in the chat. I think we're good.
Looks like we're good. Okay, thank you. And thanks so much for the interest from the public and for reminding us to insert a public comment section. Lupita, welcome. Thank you. I know you, you are having to join us from, from Puerto Rico. So it's a, it's great that you were able to make it at the start of the year. Thank you so much. And welcome everybody else. Um, so tonight's is a study session, a single study session item. I'll just put in before I hand it over to staff, I want to just say how important this affordable housing update will be to us. We're really looking forward to it. And just also put in a little plug that will be diving deep into the question of, of middle income housing in our retreat. So this will give us a lot of really good information that'll help, that help us have a good conversation in our retreat. So, and that is also a public meeting that people can come watch as well. So with that, I'll go ahead and turn it over to Charles Farrow, who will be introducing us to the entire team. And oh, before I do that, I think it would be appropriate to at least try to allow people to ask questions on slides. There aren't, I don't think there are a lot of slides in this presentation. So we should be able to maybe ask questions on subjects as they come up. It might be a little bit more productive that way. If it gets to be, you know, I want to try to keep it to no more than like five minutes on a slide or something. But if, if people have specific questions that they want to ask on a slide, just go ahead and raise your hand and I'll, I'll call on you before we transition to the next slide, if that's okay. And with that, I'll hand it over to Charles Farrow to kick us off.
Great, thanks so much, Dave. Good evening, members of the board. For the audience, I'm Charles Farrow and the Development Review Manager here at the city of Boulder. And first, I'd like to welcome our special guests and thank them for taking the time to be here tonight. So if I can take a minute to introduce our guest speakers, we're joined here this evening by Jay Sognet. He's a senior planner with the city's Housing and Human Services Department. Laura Scheinbaum, who's the Director of Real Estate Development for Boulder Housing Partners, as well as Ian Swallow, who's a Project Manager for Boulder Housing Partners. So tonight, the team's going to be presenting some really helpful and I think useful information related to how permanently affordable housing is regulated, developed, managed, and maintained over time here in Boulder. So we really look forward to the board's conversation and questions this evening. I'm very pleased to turn it over to Jay Sognet, who's going to kick us off this evening. So thanks very much.
Thank you, Charles. So it's a pleasure to meet the new Planning Board members, a lot of you I do know. So Jay Sognet's with Housing and Human Services. So I just thought it'd be helpful to provide a bit of an overview of what the city's role in, in terms of providing affordable housing in the community. And then I want to turn it over to Lauren Ian, which I think is really the main attraction. So as I mentioned, talking about the different roles, but I also wanted to just share some trends and successes. What we're seeing happen in Boulder and then talk more about the city's role. So I don't think this is a surprise to anybody. You can see the green line are detached home sale prices. So back in 20, December 2020, we still stayed under a million dollars for a detached, single family home. My guess is that we will finally break the million dollar barrier this year with the way the market has behaved in the past three or four months. And then you can see what it is for detached. And really the problem is you can see is incomes that blue line is the area median income. And that just has not been keeping up with home prices. A similar story with rents. Rents are still relatively more affordable, but they have been increasing pretty significantly over the past decade or two. And then I thought it would be helpful to throw out some terms because I think we've struggled just a little bit. I've thrown out a lot of numbers and I think it overwhelms people. So I put this slide together this morning and hopefully it's help, helpful. So when we talk about affordable housing, sort of the industry standard is a household is no more than 30% of their income on housing. So that's sort of industry wide. In Boulder, when I talk about affordable housing, I'm mostly going to be talking about permanently affordable. Because we can't rely on the market to ensure that people aren't going to be paying more than 30%. So we have really focused our efforts on a program that requires a deed restriction or a covenant that ensures affordability in perpetuity. And then just how we measure that is important for everybody to understand. So it's based on area median income. And AMI is really a federal calculation that's based on census data from Boulder. And the area median income, so it's median, so half earn more and half earn less. And in 2021, this was just updated, we're at 103,600 for a household of three. And it scales up for larger households and it scales down slightly for smaller households. And since it's really close, the 100% is really close to 100,000, it's really easy to think about this in terms of low income, we're talking about people earning between $0 and $60,000 a year or a household of three. Moderate, 61 to 79. And then that middle income is people earning 80,000 to 120,000. Everybody's with me so far? No questions? So over the years, we've achieved quite a bit. We have currently 3,767 permanently affordable units in our portfolio. 800 of those are ownership, the balance are rental. We've made quite a bit of progress since 2000 when our program began in earnest with the adoption of the Inclusionary Housing Program as well as setting the goal at 10%, which was recently updated to 15% in 2018. And you know, the program has evolved quite a bit over time and it responds to, you know, what are the current needs in the community? And the most recent need in 2018 was adding the goal to apply to middle income previously. Previously, it had a separate goal.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I gotta ask a question. You didn't write that, what is the, what percent, what number of units are for sale or ownership?
Right now, it's 799.
Okay, thank you.
Sure, I have one more question, maybe you're gonna, maybe you're gonna have it in here. I was curious what the mix was. Do you have that in here as well or like the mix of the, the size of the units? Ones, twos, threes?
Be, if you go to the, our dashboard in the Housing and Human Services webpage, you will see a breakout number of units by bedroom size, not square footage, but by, by number of bedrooms. It'll also tell you who's living in those units by profession as well as it's the other one. Oh. Ethnicity, so it's very interesting information. So I encourage you to peruse that as well. So the good news is we have quite a few units also in the pipeline. So we have almost 1,000 units that we expect to come online in the next one to say six years. And as I was saying, there's quite a bit of adaptation over, over time in the program. And probably the most recent one is that we are now requiring of most funding that we provide to our housing partners that be somewhere between 5 and 15% of all of the units will be permanently supportive housing. If you're not familiar with that term, it's really that's for first step from, from a shelter. So providing wraparound services, mental health, physical health, addiction prevention or addiction services. And it's a way to help them make that next step into more permanent housing. So there are quite a few things that go into achieving our goals. So we have a combination of regulations, policies, investments. Planning Board, I'm sure is very familiar with how inclusionary housing works. The commercial linkage fees that were recently adopted. There's a big component of that. We get quite a few units through annexation and actually the vast majority of our homeownership units come in through annexation. You should be familiar with that. So there's also policies that help us get to our goals. We have a middle income strategy and as David mentioned, you'll be talking about that in more detail next month. So I won't spend much time. There is a strategy for manufactured housing and trying to make sure that we preserve a housing type that's inherently affordable in Boulder. And then preservation, and I'm going to talk quite a bit about preservation in, in a second. And it's that investment piece. So we have local and federal funds. And a big part of the way that we're able to achieve our goals is to leverage that money. And I'll talk about that more. And we couldn't do it without our partners because the city of Boulder does not own or operate any sort of affordable housing. We rely on our partners to do that for us. So over the past six years, we've brought in about just over $66 million in funding. And as you may know, 20, about a quarter of that is through our property tax. 16% over the last six years was through federal funds. That, that slice of the pie has been decreasing consistently over the past 20 to 30 years. Laura will talk about that a little bit more. The commercial linkage fees, that will become a bigger slice, making up for the loss of federal funds. But really, the, the big source of funding is cash and loan. So as you can see, it's, it's just under half of our funding sources. And we call it the sort of workhorse of affordable housing. And I just wanted to show you that it is quite variable over time in terms of when it comes in. It's very dependent. And as you can see, those commercial linkage fees are definitely playing a much bigger role. More recently, the, the full fee was phased in just this year. So that's why you're seeing higher numbers.
Jay, I had a question on the commercial linkage fees. So when a commercial linkage fee is paid in, a percentage of that goes to affordable housing and then other percentages go to other funding needs from commercial? Is, is that how it works or does most of it go to affordable housing?
So there are fees for a variety of things. Housing is, is one of them. There are smaller fees. I, I don't know the topics off the, off the top of my head, but there's parks, there's, I don't know, somebody helping out. Charles, I think there are five or six different categories. But housing is by far the largest.
Yeah, it's municipal facilities, police, fire, transportation, parks and recreation, human services. But yeah, the, by far, almost all of it goes into affordable housing. It's a very large number that goes to affordable housing. And actually, let me correct that. I'm looking at the table, so the parks and recreation and human services, that is actually the residential impact fee. But for commercial properties, it's municipal facilities, police, fire, affordable housing, transportation. And just as an example, for office uses this year, well, I'll give you last year because it's not, I don't have my codebook updated. But last year, affordable housing was $24 per square foot of floor area and the total impact fee was 26.18. And then this year, the affordable housing portion went up to $30. So even more than the total last year. So it just shows you what a small percentage, the rest of the impact fee is compared to affordable housing.
Thank you. I've always kind of wondered how, how much I went to those other, other things.
So next, I just want to talk about how we use those funds. So we combine all of those, they go into our Affordable Housing Fund. And the beauty of that is we're able to leverage those local dollars with $2 to $3 of outside fund money. And Laura is going to go into this in more detail. Those funds are competitively distributed to our affordable housing providers. And always the funder requests exceed available funds. One of the, the, the major benefits of being able to provide funding to a project is that we can provide deeper affordability.
So Jay, I'm sorry, you, you're, you are swallowing the end of many of your sentences. Could you just speak up a little bit?
Sure.
Thank you so much. I'm sorry.
So the, one of the big advantages of the affordable, leveraging those funds is that we can fund a project and provide deeper affordability. And that means a typical affordable project may focus on rental units that provide rents at 60% AMI. And what this does is it allows us to provide additional funding so that we can provide units that are lower, say 30 to 40 and 50% AMI. There are a number of other benefits as well. So in addition to providing new construction, our housing authority is by far our most important partner in terms of constructing new units. But we also have other nonprofits in Boulder. And we even have private affordable providers, which I, and I think you've all seen those projects come across the planning board. But the what you don't really see, it has to do with preservation. So there's quite a bit of emphasis, particularly in the last five to seven years, on acquisition and rehabilitation of existing homes. And there are two examples, Tantra and the Nest. But that money also helps us to fund home buyer and home education, home, homeownership education as well as owner occupied residential rehabilitation to ensure that's to help low income homeowners maintain their homes and also to prevent foreclosures in our affordable units. We want to make sure that people can remain in their homes. It also allows us to land bank. So one thing that you may not, you're probably familiar with Palo Park and 30 Pearl, but the planning reserve, the city recently purchased a lease interest for 30 acres for the future of housing in the plant.
Yeah, it seems like there's a little technical glitch with the sentences, but I think when you moved closer to the microphone, it got a little better. Just on that previous slide, does the Ponderosa project fall under the preservation category, would you say? Since it's kind of keeping the same number of units or I don't know if that's kind of a special case, I guess.
Yeah, I would, it is a special case. It's also an example of where the city does own and operate affordable housing. But no, yeah, the idea is we are, it is an acquisition and rehabilitation of homes. Right, so yeah, I would say it's, it's a good example.
Can I ask another question, Jay? And if it's, if, if it's something you're going to get to later, just we'll flag it and you can come back to it. But is there a difference in how the city works with its nonprofit partners and versus how it works or doesn't work with the for-profit affordable housing developers?
That's a good question. No, I would say, as I said, that the funds are awarded competitively. So even the housing authority is competing against the private affordable providers and the nonprofits. So you, you know, it, they, there are just different advantages that a private or a nonprofit or the housing authority have over private affordable providers. So it's, it's a little bit of apples to oranges. But I can't tell you exactly the mechanisms, but like I said, they, they are, it is competitive. We don't treat the different, the different partners very differently.
But is, I'm just gonna follow up, I'm sorry, let me just follow up. This is, but is how the dollars are leveraged or used or the oversight that the city has any difference between the two types of providers?
No. No, if they are receiving city money, they still have all the strings attached to that money. So they have to record the covenant. They have to meet all of our funding requirements and we enforce those through a funding agreement. Does that help?
Yes, thank you.
John, if you want to.
Yeah, just, just to follow up on this competition. Can you describe the criteria on which decisions are made for, you know, if there's competition? How do you, how do you make the decision what to support?
You know, and, and I would say Laura might be able to answer this even better than I can, so.
Well, I mean, Laura is, is with one of the competitors. So I, I'm interested in how the city addresses that.
She is familiar with the process, was my only point. But so what? But so what, one thing to keep in mind, so what we do is we provide gap financing. So we will not fund a program or a project unless they have already secured some sort of low income housing tax credit deal or some sort of sort of outside funding. So what we do is we help get a project across the finish line by providing that funding where there's a gap. Because the low income housing tax credit may not pay for all the expenses of building. Does that make sense, John? So. How competitive is that proposal? And a lot of that gets evaluated by the Colorado Housing and Finance Authority. And what we're doing is just making sure that that project can actually occur in the city of Boulder.
So are you looking at how much is needed and how many, you know, how much is needed per living unit? And choosing the one that gives you most living living units per available dollar or or are there other criteria as well?
There are, and I I I am not involved in that process, so I can't give you very good details, but funding, you know, amount per unit is definitely one of those big criteria, criterion. And, you know, it's also one that that applies for, you know, those the low income housing tax credits as well. But I can, let me get back to you in terms of, I believe there is specific criteria because every project has to apply to the city and they have to meet certain, you know, they basically have to make the case for why they should receive city funding. Yeah, apologies. I don't. I don't know the ins and outs of that, but.
Okay, well, I think it'd be great to, if you could send that to us later. Thank you.
A quick question on that, Jay, if you don't mind. If for profit developers were not building affordable housing in the city, what kind of a deficit would we have or would it be met by other groups?
I think it's difficult to say. You know, that I would argue that the deficit is huge. We our biggest impediment is funding. So having more more partners that are able to put deals together that are competitive, it's it's advancing our goals. But I don't think it's easy to say whether or not, you know, what the exact numbers would be or wouldn't be.
As a point of reference, our portfolio has sixteen hundred and twenty three units in it. So of the total units that Jay showed on a previous slide, you can kind of see the percentage of where at least BHP is, and there's other nonprofits in that space as well. And then, you know, the rest would be the market rate, private developers do work. So pretty well split, I think.
So what's the result of these regulations and policies and investments? And so this is basically represents five years of information. And this was done a couple of years ago, pre pandemic. But you can see out of every hundred units, new units that were constructed in Boulder, eighty one of those were market rate. And nineteen were permanently affordable. Because of all those that funding that I was discussing, we were able to preserve as permanently affordable and additional seventeen units. So on average, over that five year period, we were getting thirty six new permanently affordable units in the city in any out of every hundred new units built. And then one of the other big advantages of preservation, that acquisition, rehabilitation and preservation has to do with distribution. So you can see, this is a map of Boulder and where our affordable house units, homes are located. And if we relied entirely on inclusionary housing, and we would only see affordable units where there is new development or has been recently been new development in Boulder. The preservation allows us to purchase units throughout the city and spread the affordable housing throughout.
Sorry, I have a I have a question, Jay. Sorry about that. There's a ongoing discuss debate, discussion about the relative benefits of. And I think there are many, the relative benefits of in having the onsite, having inclusionary housing done onsite versus making sure that the inclusion, the affordable house, permanently affordable housing is done in a in a neighborhood, within a neighborhood, trying to make the neighborhood more economically diverse. So I'm curious. Not so sure it's whether your personal opinion or what the pros and cons are, what the position is that the housing department takes on those two options.
Yeah, I mean, it's really, it's a balance, right? I mean, ideally, we would like to see the benefit of the cash is that we allows us to distribute the affordable housing throughout the city to more established parts of the city. But there's also an inherent benefit in providing those units in the neighborhoods that are newly developed. So and I would argue that, yeah, we are seeing quite a few new units where we're seeing new developments. So, yeah, it it's a challenge and and the problem is it's not always appropriate in every every location. There are site specific circumstances that dictate which might be the most appropriate. And and I understand it's a very contentious issue. I mean, I think there's, we hear quite a bit from the community that cash and loot is bad because people are buying out of the developers are buying out of their affordable housing obligation. When in fact, you know, they're paying quite a bit. I mean, it's increased significantly since twenty thousand or two thousand from sixty thousand to in two thousand, it was over a hundred and twenty thousand. So there it's they're paying a significant sum of money and that money is being used for for us to be able to leverage. So theoretically, we can get more units with the cash than if we we just simply require the developer to provide it on site. So I would say housing human services is kind of torn. We don't have a firm policy. But it depends on the circumstances, but there are benefits and policy like you guys have to deal with on a daily basis of making a choice. Anything else? What you wanted to hear, Sarah?
Wanted to hear an answer. I mean, I think that there are pros and cons. There are there are justifications for both and I, but I also know that Boulder has done a really job of making sure that there is affordable, permanently affordable housing throughout the city. And that means that we have neighborhoods that are more more economically diverse than than many small towns. So I just was cur curious what the whether the whether the department had a a preference or not.
So. All right, I'll keep going. I'm almost done, I promise. So just to give you a sampling. Like I said, you know, planning board doesn't always see all the projects that where we were able to create affordable housing. A lot of that is done through funding, but just to give you a sample. And then the last slide, which I thought might be helpful, just because I know this is something you you deal with on a regular basis. So as you know, city policy is to hold our affordable, our housing authority and our affordable housing partners to the same high standard that we hold market rate developers. And I think what this shows is just that affordable projects are often held to a much higher standard. So you can see in terms of the number of public meetings that have been required for this sort of granted, it's a very select group of projects, but in terms of the number of meetings that are required, the changes that are made to address concerns and also the additional community benefit beyond providing typically a hundred percent permanently affordable. So I just wanted to leave you with that and turn things over to Laura, unless there are some questions for me.
John has a question.
Yeah. Thanks, Jay, for this. And by the way, thanks for your presentation to the East Boulder Planning Efforts also that was just a couple of days ago on the same topic. But I was wondering, can you describe what the city is doing with respect to maintaining affordability in the town separately from these efforts, the permanently affordable efforts? And by that, I mean, considering, for example, tax changes or taxes on vacant, you know, second second build, second homes and things like that, that could have an impact on the market rates of real estate that could be a benefit to various folks also.
Yeah, John, I mean, that's a really good point. And honestly, a big focus for us is that permanently affordable. It's really difficult to move the market, but there are things that we can do. So like you mentioned. Yeah, we do provide down payment assistance for middle income home buyers, so that can help people get into a home. We have. We updated the accessory dwelling unit regulations, so that was a significant recent initiative. And that was to help existing homeowners who may be middle income to try to provide an additional resource or income source. So because what we've heard is a lot of existing homeowners are being priced out of the market. But yeah, it it's a big challenge and, you know, you you're one suggestion of, well, can we tax property, you know, second properties at a higher rate? So we have explored, you know, issues like that. It is extremely challenging. And I think the legal counsel that we received from the city attorney's office was that's, you know, it's it would not pass muster, would not withstand legal challenge. But we're always open to new ideas, particularly, and I think we'll talk about this more next month, John, is how do we crack this nut of middle income? Because right now, it's really about housing or ownership, right? Because rentals, middle income rentals are currently affordable. PHP tried to provide rentals at middle income, to middle income levels, they would be competing with the market. So what we're talking about is when people are ready to move from renting to that first home purchase. That's where they're really challenged. And that's when a lot of our community members move out to the surrounding suburbs. So anyway, I'll just leave it at that. I mean, I think it's it's definitely worth more conversation, but our our focus to a large extent is on that zero to hundred and twenty percent AMI.
John, I can I just follow up quickly on that? That is, I'm wondering if you can just describe very briefly what the constraints that the city faces on on other matters behind, you know, beside the permanently affordable. And for example, rent control, I I understand is, you know, our options are limited at the state level. But what other options there may be available to to address these issues besides the permanently affordable housing approaches that we're taking now?
You know, I would say the city experimented extensively between the nineteen seventies and the late nineteen nineties. Different programs to limit the size of future homes, programs to, you know, purchase middle income homes to, you know, provide a down payment assistance grant and make those homes permanently affordable. Some of those were successful, others were not, and the city really in two thousand made the conscious choice to really focus on the deed restriction, the covenant approach to ensuring permanent affordability. Recognizing that, you know, a lot of home prices, it was older was not going to be able to control the market, market rate housing in Boulder. That said, you know, there are tools, land use tools, structuring your zoning code to promote more of a diversity of housing. And and to me, I think that's where the focus should be. Providing a variety for people to choose from, they may not be particularly new construction, may not be affordable. But a duplex, triplex, fourplex is inherently significantly more affordable than a single family eight thousand square foot home. So to me, I mean, that's where I would focus more of our energy, but that's my opinion.
Jay, the the, thank you for this. It's really helpful. The initial slide that you put up with housing prices and escalating along with median income staying a lot more flat than the housing crisis. Can you you guys spend a lot of time thinking about that? What do you think are the major contributors that are creating that paradigm in Boulder?
I think that it's it's national. I don't think this is a, this isn't unique to Boulder. So I think the West Coast, East Coast, the mountain towns of Colorado, they have been experiencing this for the past thirty years. Boulder is slightly behind, but it has to do, frankly, has to do with, it's a desirable place to live. And and I don't think it's, again, it's just, it's not unique to Boulder. And and let me just add, I mean, when we had the housing conversation, housing Boulder back in twenty fifteen, you know, the the recognition was affordable housing is a challenge for Boulder. There are no silver bullets. There has to be a very comprehensive approach, lots of different tools. There is a toolbox of housing options that we crafted back in twenty fifteen that had about forty different things that we could be pursuing. And everything from raising additional funding sources to tweaking our zoning code. And, you know, those do come up and we we have been exploring those and implementing those as time and resources. But none of them are going to solve the problem.
Thank you. Lisa and then John.
Hey, just real quickly. One of the things that, you know, is politically a hot potato, but be interesting to get your thoughts on is the bedrooms for people in Edmonton. What impact that might have on on the housing picture in Boulder, both short and long term?
Yeah, I mean, it's interesting. Occupancy has always been, you know, hot button issue in Boulder. And, you know, going back to the twenty fifteen housing housing Boulder effort, you know, one of our early wins was to allow seniors to exceed the current occupancy. So the whole idea was, you know, how do we allow golden girls to live in Boulder and, you know, not be violating the law? And, you know, we went to council thinking that this was a no brainer. And, you know, we even made the case that, you know, we don't anticipate grandmas out in the front yard doing keg stands. People came out in droves. There was so much opposition to that one concept that council didn't even move it to second reading. They they didn't, we didn't even hear from staff in terms of what the proposal was. They just shut it down immediately. So I think it's a challenge. I think times may have been changing. I think council recognizes that the next ballot measure has a very good chance of passing. But I think it's also very difficult to quantify, to say exactly how many people are going to take advantage of it. You know, household size has been declining for for decades, generations. So, you know, providing more opportunities for people to live together, I personally, I think is is a great idea. Not trying to define what family is, but that should be, that should be front and foremost in our minds. But other than that, I mean, staff will do what council directs and will implement whatever their desires are.
I I understand that, but I'm just wondering if there's any sort of a quantification of of impact that has been done by staff.
No.
Thank you.
It's very, how would you, there'd be so many assumptions associated with that, that I'm not sure how meaningful it would be.
Thank you. And Lisa, you had a question?
Yeah, so thank you, Jay. I was just looking at the dashboard and kind of had some questions off of that, that I think you've already touched on in terms of both declining sizes of households and also the kinds of housing we provide. So I'm looking at. housing we provide. So I'm looking at the portion over on, uh, the right that talks about number of affordable homes by housing type, and I was just struck again by how many are multifamily and condos, the vast, vast majority. And then how very few are things like single family townhomes, duplexes, fourplexes, um, and so on. And, and I think I, I know that this is something I've certainly seen. I, I don't know what your data shows. I'd be curious to hear from you if you have this data on people exiting affordable housing, um, and where they go next. But just anecdotally, um, I certainly know of a lot of people who ended up buying in Lafayette or Longmont or Erie, you know, who initially were in maybe even a homeowner situation, um, you know, where they owned something.
Oh, um, something happened to the audio.
Can you not hear me, David?
Oh, no, I can't.
Can everyone else hear me? Okay, it might have been.
I thought you cut out, but I think you're.
Um, yeah, so, so I, I'd just love to hear more about that. We're gonna be doing a deep dive on, on middle income housing soon. Um, and I'd just be curious to know kind of if you have any more data or information on kind of how the sorts of affordable home, housing that we offer, um, affects the kinds of population that we're able to serve and also who then transitions out of the city, um, if at some point that stops serving them.
Yeah, I, I can share. We, we recently did, um, a survey of, um, homeowners, uh, in the Affordable Home Ownership Program. Uh, so it, and we do it, um, well, we've done it twice in the past ten years and we ask general questions about, you know, how satisfied are you with your purchase? Are you glad you made the purchase? Um, what did you expect? What didn't you expect? Um, do you plan to stay in Boulder? Um, and it, you know, and it paints actually a fairly positive picture. You know, a lot of people that are in the housing are happy with the housing. You know, if you aren't, um, and, you know, that might give you a, a little bit of sense of, um, what people's intentions are, but I would say the vast majority have no intention of leaving, particularly once they're in an affordable home. I think that's very different if you're in a market rate, um, home and, um, your choices are limited based on the total cost. Then those outlying communities start looking a little more, much more attractive, right? So you, you can get more square footage, you can get a slightly larger yard, um, and, you know, it's worth the trade off of driving to those places. So.
Sorry to interrupt you, Jay, but I'll make, I'll make a quick recommendation, which is, and it's anecdotal, I cannot prove a darn thing. Um, but I would recommend doing exit interviews. So not, not just like the people who are currently in it, but if, if budget will allow, if staff time will allow, when people transition out, ask them why they're transitioning out and when they're going, because I can think of five people or couples right off the top of my head right now who I know left affordable housing and, and left the city, which again anecdotal, I, I can't tell you how significant that is or isn't, and, and you have other data. But I'd be interested to hear when people sell those units, where do they go? You know, as opposed to just overall within the entire system, um, because like we're losing young people, I think is what's happening.
So I'm gonna, um, ask us to go ahead and, uh, um, move forward because, um, Laura actually is with us for just one more hour and has an eight o'clock, stopping point. So, um, that'll give Laura a chance to, uh, be with us for the next hour and then Ian, thank you for, uh, staying if we go beyond that. And, uh, and then we can also loop back with additional discussion at the end, of course. So thank you. I assume, uh, that's where you wanted to go next, Jay?
Yep, perfect, perfect time.
Thanks, and, uh, thank you, Laura.
Yeah. Hi, good evening. Um, nice to see you all this evening. I am Laura Scheinbaum. I work for Boulder Housing Partners as our real estate director. Ian Swallow is here with me this evening. He's one of our senior project managers. I'm really excited to be here when I'm not asking you for something. So, um, thanks for having us and, um, look forward to the conversation. So, um, as with Jay, please, um, feel free to um, ask questions as we go by slides. Some of them are kind of bundled, so it might make sense to wait till we get through a couple and then ask some questions on, uh, specific topic. Um, but I'm gonna go ahead and share my screen now and we'll get going. And I'm not seeing my. Did that share?
Yes. We're good.
Perfect. All right. So, oh, just to set the stage of who we are. So we are a partner with the city, but we have a separate governance. Um, we are chartered by the state. We are created in nineteen sixty-six. We are the housing authority in the city of Boulder. We do have our board. We have a nine-member board and they are appointed by the mayor, um, and city council. So that's how we're structured. We have an executive director and his name is Jeremy Durham. He would have been here tonight. Um, when he sends his regrets, but he had some other obligations. Our, our mission, you've heard me talk about this in the past, but is to provide quality, affordable homes and foster thriving Boulder communities. Um, in a nutshell, we own and perpetuity, we manage and we develop affordable housing in the city of Boulder. Um, the pictures that you see, all these smiling faces, um, show the diversity of folks that we are serving. So there's seniors, there's families with kids, there's, um, individuals with disabilities. So it's, we're really, um, hitting a wide swath of folks here in the city. Um, we do have, um, as I mentioned just a little bit ago, an answer to a question. Um, I think the latest update as of today was one thousand six hundred and twenty-three units in the city. Um, we also manage and administer a housing choice voucher program, which extends, um, the reach of the federal government with a subsidy. So an individual that qualifies for affordable housing receives a voucher and they take that into the private sector to use that voucher. And then they pay a portion of their income for rent and then the balance is paid by, um, the value on that voucher. Um, so of that, we have one thousand three hundred and fifty-two vouchers. Um, and so that's a, another, um, mechanism by which we are getting affordability, um, into the community and tapping into that private sector market. So next slide here, just a bit about who we serve. So, um, again, I, I, I've heard the questions about middle income and I promise actually I do have some slides about getting there here in a minute. Um, but predominantly we are serving folks who are of very, very low income. So you can see some of these thresholds, median income for folks living in Boulder Housing Partners properties is fifteen thousand six hundred and eighty-four dollars. It's not a lot. You see some of those thresholds at the bottom, but thirty percent of area median income is, um, for one person is twenty-four thousand ish and family of four, thirty-four thousand five hundred and thirty. Um, and again, you can see that we've got, um, predominance, um, families with children, seniors, people with disabilities. Um, I always giggle about this other, but it's, it's really, um, we have some market rate, um, units that we have in the portfolio. Not many, but a few and those, uh, we don't collect data on. So these would be the folks that are living with us that are in a market rate property. Um, what we do though is, as you can see with these very low median incomes is really diving deep into the affordability range. So trying to really, um, get at that lowest of the low income, um, need in the, in the, in Boulder. So moving on here and any questions about any of this? I think a lot of this we've talked about before when we present. I can't see everybody, so if, um, if there's a question, please speak.
I just have a question, uh, and just to understand the market rate, because I wasn't aware that you had market rate in your portfolio. How does that work and why does that exist?
Yeah, so it exists, um, because it was really underwriting public housing when we actually had public housing in our portfolio. So we built the Bridgewater Apartments in the mid eighties. And that was because we had, um, three hundred units of public housing that was limited in our ability to, um, take rent on those units, because it was income restricted. So you would not only income restricted, but, um, rent was based on your incomes. You would pay thirty percent of your income for rent. That was if your median income is fifteen thousand six hundred dollars, your rent was very low and it wasn't enough to support the operations of our public housing portfolio. So we built, um, our Bridgewater Apartments to flow cash basically to underwrite the public housing. So that's where that came. Um, we have since divested of that public housing and moved them into a tax credit program. So we're no longer, um, losing a ton of money on the public housing portfolio. It's now a tax credit portfolio.
So, so is that market rate, sorry, just to follow up. So is that market rate housing, eh, an opportunity for, um, to be ultimately put into a, an affordable housing program, permanently affordable housing?
Um, I would say potentially it's something that we assess on a regular basis. Um, we do use it to leverage for, um, other tools though within the organization. So when we bought the Tantra, for example, when we bought Tantra Lake Apartments in two thousand seventeen, we were able to refinance the Bridgewater Apartments and pull equity out of that property so that we could afford to buy the Tantra Lake Apartment. So it's a tool that we utilize, um, in a number of ways. It also is collateral for a line of credit that we utilize to be able to be, um, nimble in the, the real estate market when we wanna go compete for, um, apartments or, or land, that kind of thing.
Thanks. Yeah. And Laura, I'll go ahead and watch for hands, uh, and call on people, uh, so you don't have to worry about that. You wanna ask something, John, before we go on? Oh, you're not muted, you're unmuted, so.
Do, do these numbers include the folks who are getting vouchers? And staying in, in market rate apartments with them?
Um, that's a great question. No, these numbers only include the folks that have a voucher that are living, um, in a BHP unit. So that's the caveat up there in red. Um, so housing choice voucher residents, um, living. So we have some vouchers that are in, um, properties that we own. So for example, at thirty Pearl, we have thirty vouchers that we have project based um, at that property so that we can house people with permanent, um, exiting homelessness that are permanently supportive housing units. We also have another twenty units that are for individuals with developmental, intellectual and developmental disabilities. So there's a bit of overlap when we're trying to really serve a special needs population. So that, that would include data here, that data is included in this, but not, um, strictly the housing choice voucher. Yeah, residents.
Thank you.
Uh, other questions before?
I think we're good to go on.
Okay, great. So there's a number of strategies that we employ. Um, I think some of the questions we've already heard this evening really sort of speak to some of this and I, and I can help you see how we utilize both sides of that, um, cash and loo versus onsite, um, discussion, so to speak. So, um, these are the strategies we employ. So new construction, that's when you see us most frequently, right? We come and ask you for permission to build something new that's a hundred percent affordable. Um, acquisition, that's what Jay was talking about in terms of preservation. So buying apartment complexes in the city so that we can spread out affordability seamlessly and sort of, you know, have it blend in with the rest of the community. Uh, we do land bank, um, land is a, a premium here in Boulder, as we know. So when we see opportunity to um, have site control will, um, in a location that we think would be, um, really good for affordable in the future, we will go and, and land bank something. We do, um, as I mentioned, we have a huge portfolio and so we are good stewards of our assets. And so we do invest in our existing portfolio frequently. Um, so we renovate, um, and really make sure that, again, you can't tell the difference between our properties and other properties in the community. And then we partner, um, you saw us in front of you last week partnered with, um, the diagonal plaza, uh, team. And so, you know, there are opportunities for us to come in and, and do onsite affordable when a private developer wants to do that onsite affordable and thinks it's the right thing for the community. Now, when we go to acquire, um, you know, that is a place where the city would help us with equity to, um, you know, get something under contract potentially. So that would be a place where cash and loo, um, if that came into the city, it would be really helpful. Um, similarly in new construction, if we're trying to, as Jay mentioned, um, really get our area median incomes low and provide, provide a blend of affordability ranges, then, you know, having some thirty, forty, fifty, sixty percent AMI ranges is really important. But that, sometimes, as we'll see here in a minute, when I get to some of the, the numbers will, um, helps us get into those deeper affordability places. Questions on this or the, anything before?
Any hands, so.
All right, great. Okay, so this is the main, the low income housing tax credit. I'm gonna start, um, I'm gonna drone out just for a second though. When you build affordable housing, it's, you know, basics one O one, but affordable housing costs X to build, which is this, and then it, if you can see me, it's, um, the incomes that we can charge, um, here and they don't support enough money to be able to pay for the affordable housing. So what you end up with is this proverbial gap. And so that gap, especially in Boulder, can be quite large. Um, and so you're looking always for sources of equity to come in and help you, um, build and then um, be able to have the rents low enough that you meet the affordable limits for having, um, the covenant deed restricted property. So in the mid eighties, I just was talking about the public housing program and, and BHP is largely divested of our public housing. But that is something that maybe you've heard about over the past, right? It's the largely, um, a failed exercise by the federal government to directly build affordable housing and then have those managed by local housing authorities. So that was generally a failure and, and has, was pretty obsolete because there's no way to reinvest in those properties. And so they stopped really doing any sort of public housing and created the low income housing tax credit program in the mid eighties so that they could allow, um, developers to um, tap into private sector equity dollars to help build affordable housing. Um, it's largely been very successful and, and it's really created a lot of affordable product in the country, um, and in, in our city. So, um, we own quite a bit of affordable housing that's been developed through the low income housing tax credit program. I'm trying to be really careful with my language and not use too many acronyms, but you'll hear this reference as Lytech, you'll hear it as just the tax credit program. But, um, that is the low income housing tax credit program. Um, it's a federal, um, incentive program, basically offering a dollar for dollar tax credit against an investor's federal tax liability. Um, there's also a state tax credit and so there's a state tax that, um, if, if an investor has a state tax liability, um, there's also a state tax credit that can help with that. Um, pricing fluctuates, it's not a dollar for dollar as it's, um, advertised. But, um, depending on what the needs are of a certain investor, um, what size type, the size or the location, um, the amenities, the um, population being served, um, all will, um, dictate sort of where you land on that, um, tax credit. So I'm gonna, um, bundle a couple slides into this whole tax credit discussion and then I can, I think that might be bettered and can take questions at the end of that. Um, and this is the Palo Park, um, neighborhood that we built with a low income, um, plus a four percent plus a low income. Okay.
You leaving right now?
Was there a question? No.
David, you need to mute yourself.
We'll try to mute, uh.
Okay. So this is how it works. Um, lots of arrows and things here, but, um, I wanted to point out that first and foremost, um, this is, you know, enabled by federal legislation and the tax code. Um, section forty-two, you'll hear it referenced as occasionally. So federal government authorizes this. They say to a state, you get X number based on your population of tax credits. They then give those tax credits to a state housing and finance authority in Colorado. That is the Colorado housing and finance authority. You'll hear it referenced as CHAFA quite a bit. So CHAFA is distributes the tax credits. Um, over here, we have the developer and this is since I put BHP in here. So we have a project that we wanna finance. We put in an application, we put together a whole bunch of information threshold, um, criteria for CHAFA. We submit a proposal to CHAFA. They evaluate that. They say, yep, that looks great. Uh, and then they give BHP, the developer, the tax credits. I like to think of it as monopoly money to go and sell. So then at that point we go and we pitch our project to investors. And those investors say, yeah, we think that's worth ninety cents on the dollar. Somebody might say eighty-eight, somebody might say ninety-one. We then make a deal with an investor who's gonna be our partner in this deal for a period of about fifteen years. So that money then flows into the deal. Um, we are also at that point able to seek debt, so we'll go and get a loan. Um, so we put together the equity from the investor, debt from a lender. And then typically we also have, um, still a gap. So unfortunately, even with all of these resources, we're still gonna need local support. And so this is where grant money will come in from the city, could be from the cash and loo program, that kind of thing. There's also other sources. The state has some, um, grant financing for affordable housing, as does the county through their worthy cause program. So there's other sources other than the city, but generally the city is our good partner, um, in that last little bit of financing. And then of course, you know, we. And then, of course, you know, we have our people that come in and rent and that income helps support paying off the debt on a monthly basis. Okay, so that's how it works, very simplified, of course. And there are also different values of tax credits. And so this first one here is the most competitive and the hardest to get and also the most valuable. So this is based on a presumed four hundred thousand dollar total development cost for one unit. So the nine percent tax credit is highly competitive. CHAFA usually gets able to award about twenty-five percent of applications of a hundred percent each year. And you can see why it's so competitive. People want that two hundred and eighty thousand ish dollars per year or per unit, which is sometimes valued in that like seventy percent range of total development cost. Jumping over here to non-competitive tax credits, this is the four percent tax credit. And so this is worth less, but still quite a bit of money, a hundred and twenty thousand dollars or so. It's non-competitive, but it's not like they give them out just no problem. Here you go, you still have to meet threshold items and you still have to pair this with a form of debt called a private activity bond, which actually is a very scarce resource that we do have to compete for. So while this is considered non-competitive, there's there's some limiters on the four percent as well. And then here in the middle, and this is a tool that we, as Boulder Housing Partners, have utilized quite a bit in the past few years, is the four percent paired with a state tax credit. So the state of Colorado, seven years ago, created a state housing tax credit, another forum, really just a gap financing. CHAFA has asked to have that paired with the four percent, so we compete for that. And you get into this, you know, two hundred and twenty thousand dollar range or, you know, fifty to sixty percent of your total development cost being covered by this tax credit. So all of this is to say, you know, there's different methodologies to get there. It's all relatively competitive, but you can see what a great source of equity it is for these projects. So competing for tax credits, as I mentioned, it's some are truly competitive, the four percent tax state and the nine percent. But and these are the types of qualities that that CHAFA is looking for to be able to award these tax credits. So I want to make sure that the project is in a good location, close to schools and transportation and commercial nodes for grocery shopping, that type of thing. They want a market study to demonstrate need in your community. The housing has to look nice and be of a quality standard. That your tenant populations are interested on who you're serving and are you really meeting the needs of your community? Energy efficiency, this one's very much a slam dunk. Generally, Boulder has such a great energy code that, you know, just by meeting our energy code, we're surpassing most most state, most other applications, given how how strict our energy code is, which is fantastic for future sustainability in the in the city. And then this big one here, readiness to proceed, and I want to talk about that for a minute. In the past, there's been some healthy tension between the city of Boulder, I think, and CHAFA regarding which comes first, chicken or the egg? You know, do you go finance it or do you get your permissions to build? What CHAFA is saying and what Boulder Housing Partners is adhering to is that we're gonna take entitled projects forward to CHAFA. So we're gonna work with our city first and make sure that city wants it to get built and then we'll take it to CHAFA to get it financed. Now, with that said, I'm gonna go on to this next slide real quick. This is not really intended to be legible or readable, but this is our city entitlement process. And and this is why you usually see me sitting up here next to somebody like Bill Holicky, who knows this process inside and out, because it takes an incredible amount of sophistication and money and time to 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 get through this process. What we're dedicated to doing is getting through this process to a point that we have permission to build and then we're gonna go and apply to CHAFA. The risk there, of course, is that, you know, it's money out of pocket. This is hundreds of thousands of dollars worth of fees and consultant time to to do this. But that's all very important to us so that when we go back to CHAFA and have our application, we can tell them that we are ready to go forward and we have a viable project. So I think that's important. It might be a little bit of a shift of what you've heard in the past from us, and this is just something I wanted to highlight. And so, sorry, going down here. Any questions there? I did want to pause for a second and then we can go into a sample numbers for a deal.
Yeah, I'll just ask very quickly, and then, John, the these must, these applications must be pretty large. I mean, with all those kind of criteria, so that that would hundreds and thousands of pages generally, projects, I can just imagine how much goes into it.
I mean, yeah, so they used to be pages and trees and now unfortunately it's all electronic. But this is the middle process is very extensive. It takes probably six months to pull one together and that's after we've done all of our due diligence to make sure that we think we have a project that's gonna be good for the city and for and CHAFA is gonna be able to support it. So, yeah, it's it's comprehensive, to say the least.
We can be thankful we don't have to review all that, John.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I I think you characterized the the tension characteristic quite well between asking planning board to give the go-ahead and then getting the financing for various projects. So to what degree can changes be made after the application for financing with the Housing Finance Authority has been submitted or or even approved?
Yeah, so I mean, there there in lies the rub, right? So that's why we would like to get through site review approval so that we know that we can build what we are telling CHAFA. We say we can build, right? So so, yeah, that once we've submitted to them, there's, I think, probably some special considerations that could be done with that. But they typically are gonna hold you to what you have said in an application. If it's a unit here, maybe one unit or two units or something, maybe that would be on a unit count, something or a unit mix, you know, less three bedrooms and more two bedrooms or vice versa, depending on market conditions. But generally, once you submit, they want to make sure you hold to that that program that you've said you're gonna do. Which, again, is why I want to, you know, kind of commit here that we're working to make sure that you all are happy first and then we'll go source the funds for it, yeah.
Thank you.
Great. Any more questions on this?
Numbers, so more basics here. This is not exactly as complicated as these performers look, but they, it's definitely gives you a sense of what we're we're doing here. So this is a fifty unit project, hypothetical fifty unit project that is being financed without tax credits but with affordable rents. And so with affordable rents, you could get a debt amount of five point five million dollars. Maybe you could get some outside grants of a million dollars. But your costs are down here are, you know, you still have a land cost, you have your construction hard cost. You have a developer fee, which, you know, most people work for, have to pay for for their time, soft costs. Given all the entitlement work I just showed you and legal fees that kind of go into doing a development, there is soft cost involved. So all of that, without any big source of equity, is creating this gap that I was describing earlier of twelve point six million dollars. Okay, so fast forward to the next slide. Here is a deal with tax credits over on the right. So didn't move my computer to be able to see this, but so you've got debt of this five million, five point five million, as we discussed. Here comes your tax credit equity on fifty units of eleven million dollars. I've renamed our grant source here, but now we've got the city of Boulder coming in with one point nine million dollars on the fifty units. Maybe getting some worthy cause funds here of seven hundred thousand for this total here. And then your sources are the same. So you've got land, hard construction cost, you've got a developer fee and you've got your self cost. So you can see just again how valuable these tax credits really are and how, you know, quite frankly, a deal would not be able to move forward if you were trying to source that kind of equity with an affordable rent. So this next slide is basically showing you how density and scaling up in the affordable world is, it it does matter. So from from my point of view, you know, I do the same amount of work for fifty units as we do for sixty units. So it's efficient if we can get that extra ten units in there. But from a financing perspective, it's also very efficient. So as you can see here, you've got your debt coming across for your fifty minutes. This is all the same as what we had just looked at. And when you add sixty units and a digital ten units in the, your amount of of credit goes up, your state tax credit, tax credits here. Your city investment goes down, so you're getting ten more units, but your city investment has gone down. Your outside grant sources have gone down and your total is here to still build, you know, with your sources down here, but you get ten more units. So, you know, this tax credit really flexes for the project and allows a community to get more or units for less money. So I just am providing this, you know, density is always can be a touchy subject, especially in some neighborhoods where we go to build. This is why when we go forward with projects, we think it's important to look at what what is available through the current zoning. And if we are allowed to build sixty units per se, then we're gonna try and build those sixty units and not do a lot of horse trading for, oh, maybe we'll just do a few less. It's it's an important mechanism for us to continue to have, you know, just financial efficiency as well as moving a dial on affordable product in the city.
Nice question from George.
Yeah.
Yeah, just a question on nomenclature.
Yeah.
So trying to understand the fifty to sixty project difference, unit difference. Are you talking about density or are you talking about the scale of the project? Because to me, those are two different things.
Yeah, it's a great question. I I think this is really talking about if if our opportunity is to build fifty units, but we have the opportunity to get sixty more or ten more in there. I I didn't take into zoning considerations in town, but if we had the permission to build the ten, then we would want to build the ten. So, for example, if I had a fifty, a property where I was gonna get build fifty and the neighbors are happy, but if I build sixty, my financing is better. You know, there's some of that healthy tension in the community that we talk about. So I don't know if that answers your question. This is really just saying it's more efficient to build more units with this project.
I'll also point out that the the fact that the land cost is the same in both kind of indicates that it's a density thing, right? Because you're dealing with the same amount of land, but more units on that land, right? So that means it's primarily density based. I I don't agree that, well, I guess that's the question, because I I see the land thing, which is a density issue. But then I'm trying to understand the tax credits and and what we're talking about is, that's why I'm trying to understand the scale of the project or density, because those are, those are, those are two different distinct things. I'm just trying to understand, I I get your point on on land, David, but I guess that's I see you're a little confused. I see what you're saying. Why? Why does that give you so much bang for your buck with the Lytech and, you know, just?
I guess, I guess here, we're just trying to say if, and really, I mean, generally, I'll talk about height. I've tried to avoid height tonight, but, you know, so if you're building, let's say you have a finite piece of land, the land cost is fixed. If I build three stories at fifty units and I can add an extra story on for another ten units, it's, I'm going to get, you know, more tax credits, right? So that's helping the project because instead of getting the eleven million, I'm getting thirteen point two million because it's by unit. And then the, so that would be a density. I mean, I think that's answering your question regarding density. And that's the the benefit there is that you're getting those additional tax credits in the same location with more units. Yes.
Does that answer that, George? Yeah, it's it's nuanced, because you're you're assuming, you're assuming that you're you're, we're picking a project where land is fixed and that's the only way to achieve scale, right? Is that that kind of what you're saying?
It is, but in in Boulder, land generally is fixed, I mean.
If you're, yeah, if you're if you're looking at a site and deciding how, you know, how many units you can get on there, right? That's Yeah, that 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 answers my question. I'm just trying to understand how it's all computed.
Yeah, so this and understand too, this is a very, you know, I'm trying to keep it pretty simple, but, you know, be happy to.
So, John, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Yeah, just to pursue this question a bit further. When you talk about units and this example here, are you being pushed towards lots of small one bedroom units as opposed to fewer three bedroom units? Or or is there some standard unit that you're talking about?
So this is just general units. I think it's a good question. We are gonna get into how we make those decisions here in a moment. So if you can wait a second, we can get into how we come up with unit configurations and unit mixes for property. But this, I I'd say this is generic and that, you know, we could assume it's all one bedrooms or all two bedrooms or something like that.
So it's not that the this financing is pushing you towards certain units, it's other considerations that that you make that decision on.
So we do not make our decisions on unit mix based on financing, we may base it on market data, so.
Okay, thanks.
Great, let's see how that works.
And so just the last quick thing here. This is acquisitions of existing apartments. So one thing I did want to mention for BHP, so on these deals, maybe I'll go to one that wasn't quite so complicated, but so one point two, this is without textures. So developer fees, one point two million here. The tax credit program actually requires a developer to take a tax developer fee. So for Boulder Housing Partners, we put that into a development equity fund. I call that very lovingly my war chest. And so that is money that we then deploy to go and and acquire. So that money gets redeployed back into the community to buy or develop or buy land or something. So so that's money that is recycled back into mission. And so this is an example of, you know, where you have the tax credit here to help you build this thirty, you know, this new construction project here. In an acquisition, when you're trying to compete in the Boulder market, you don't have time to go and do the the long tax credit project process to get a tax credit allocation. So you have to finance this in some manner. So this is when you're talking about the, what what do we do with Bridgewater or market rate property, you know? That option, we refinance that to help, you know, buy Tantra. We take the money that we set aside from developer fee and use those funds again to finance acquisitions and the portfolio. Questions here? I'm now gonna turn this over to Ian Swallow and he's gonna, most recently working on our thirty Pearl development and is very familiar with our lease up process and then also decision making on how we are allocating units with new development.
Thanks, Laura. Nice to see everyone. Thanks for, thanks for having us. The the next couple of slides, we pulled together, looking at just some some data from recent market studies that BHP has done. So just as a little background, every every project, every community we build, we do a pretty in-depth market study. We hire an outside analyst who basically looks at what is the the demand in the in the community and then makes recommendations on unit mix. So that's both unit size as well as affordability levels to us so that we know, you know, our we're kind of meeting demand where it is. So the slide you're seeing here, I think, this is from our Canopy project. So this market study was a few years ago, but I thought it was interesting because it had kind of a look ahead. And what you're really seeing here is Boulder, you know, renter households. We're seeing upwards of seventy percent of our renter households are one and two person households. And you can really see, you know, looking from two thousand seventeen forward, there was not really any expected change in that composition. So you can see, you know, the largest increase was less projected to be less than one percent. That's in the one person household, but really across the board. You know, the demographics of the region are staying about the same, where we're heavily skewed towards smaller households for our rental household. So that has definitely, I think, stayed true as we've seen more recent data that we've looked at. So, Laura, you can hop to the next slide. This this data is pulled from a more recent market study, and so this basically takes that to a more nuanced level. So this is looking Boulder renter households who would qualify for BHP affordable. So this is looking Boulder renter households who would qualify for BHP affordable housing. So again, that's that 60% of area median income and below. And what you'll see here, which is, you know, pretty consistent with overall Boulder rental data is that, you know, about 70%, a little over 70% of our households that qualify for affordable housing are one and two person households. So that is really a demand that we've seen be consistent over the past couple of years. You know, I think, looking down the three, four, five person household, those are still significant numbers of people. It's certainly something we want to be serving. But overall, the highest demand that we've seen is really in the one and two person households there. See, maybe question?
Yeah, I have a question. I'm sorry, David. I have a question. So I was just looking at rental statistics today. And 65% of Boulder renters are 23 or younger. And I and some portion, some large portion of that must be students. Then if I'm not mistaken, students are not eligible, correct?
Yeah, that's a that's a great question. And one we is always a little bit of a struggle in Boulder. So in all our market studies, they this excludes the student population. So I would I would qualify that, that it's, you know, to the best of the market analyst's ability to do that. It's it's certainly nuanced, but this data, you know, I would say is a high level of confidence that this excludes student renters from this data.
Okay, so then what is the the other statistic was that something like 22% of renters are millennium millennials and 5% are boomers, which and this probably does not total 100%. So I apologize for not knowing what the last percentage is. But so what is this break? What is this breakdown into in terms of age? I mean, I don't know if you can even do age as a breakdown. I'm just really curious about that.
Yeah, that's a that's a great question. You know, I don't know that off the top of my head. I would am just getting a market study update for our Mount Cavalry Senior Housing Project. So I could certainly follow up with you on that information. You know, my guess is, as you know, we would see across basically Colorado in the region, it's, you know, it's a growing percentage of senior renters. So I'm sure it's a small but growing percent in this number would be my guess, but that is purely a guess.
I'm sorry, David, can I follow one more question?
Sure, go ahead.
So I just wanna and I want to understand these numbers. These numbers reflect eligible people who are eligible for permanently affordable housing, which is 60% or less of AMI. Okay, so it doesn't, it does not tell us much. Or we shouldn't imagine that it's telling us something about moderate, high, moderate and missing, missing middle needs. It's but it is telling us very specifically about low and and moderate housing needs or in who who might be eligible for this kind of housing.
So for this slide, yes, the previous slide, that was actually all Boulder renting households. So that would be more of that, like, kind of all encompassing number here in terms of household data.
Okay.
So it's so it's similar, it it'll be slightly different, but it's actually fairly consistent between the two.
So but that first part, that first graph, I'm so sorry, that first graph is, does not exclude students. People under it, that does not exclude, this graph does not exclude students. This is totality of this, the the population.
This would be, this would be all eligible renters. So this would exclude students because this, I'm just looking at the the data source here. It's from one of our market studies. So it would exclude students, but this would be inclusive of basically all renters in Boulder excluding students. And then and there I can double check all that just to be sure I'm giving you accurate info, but that is is what I would say.
Okay, I'd love if 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 what you said was inaccurate, please let us know.
I will definitely do that.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Back back on, yeah, that slide, I was was curious. So does this, I'm I'm just trying to parse out where this, how this data comes out. Is this reflective of everyone who's renting in Boulder? Is that reflective of the housing stock that exists for them? I'm just trying to figure out the chicken and the egg.
Yeah, so this, I think what this would reflect, I need a I need a source for my source here. But this would reflect like existing renters. Like what what is the demand? So it's not necessarily units. I I'll have a slide on what the units are, but this would be, you know, potential Boulder renters. What is that household makeup? So the majority of this is probably renting, but I see what you're saying. Is it, does it skew this way? Because those are the units that are available or are these the people that are looking for units?
Yeah, exactly. My question was, is this demand or is this what's what's available and thus creating this picture?
So this so this would show demand. I will double check looking at exactly what the source is, but these are all like demand side numbers.
All right.
Yep. This is, so this is kind of flipping that. So this is where we're seeing kind of the, you know, supply side. What is vacancy? The this data is a little out of date. This is from 2018. But I think we would see a similar picture today, just showing vacancy rates in the Boulder market. So again, that I think really is reflecting the demand side. So we see, you know, the highest vacancy rate. This this is all rental, of course, in the three bedroom units and then kind of decreasing as we get to the smaller unit type. So Georgie, I think this kind of is the is the maybe the complement piece to to your question on the on the chicken or egg. I think it's we're really seeing demand for the smaller unit types, both on the demand side renters looking to rent a unit as well as the vacancy data in existing units in Boulder.
Yeah.
So on this, this super interesting. So on, let's say, the three bed, 8.7 vacancy versus the studio and one bed, 5.8. Do you know the reason behind that? Is it because there aren't renters that are looking for that? Or that the inventory doesn't suit their needs? And kind of goes back to Lisa's question a little bit. And the idea that as people are transitioning through the system, I could see a need for a three bedroom, but maybe is the three bedroom a condo and not a townhouse? For example, I just I just curious what your thoughts are on that.
Sure, yeah, I mean, that's, you know, there's a lot of a lot of nuance there, obviously. It it's probably a little bit of both. I mean, I think, you know, this is, this is overall, this is not just the affordable inventory. So I think you would see kind of a mix of housing types available in these, you know, categories of studio two, three bed. My guess is it probably skews fairly similar to, you know, the overall Boulder market makeup where, you know, we have, we have a lot of single family homes, but then we also have, you know, plenty of apartments and condos. They're just a little bit more concentrated and a little denser. So it's an interesting question. I don't know that I have a exact answer. But my guess is it's some combination of both of those things. Great, I think next slide, Laura. And then this, I I think, again, trying to show a little bit on the the supply side. So on the left, what you'll see, this is all BHP units as a breakdown by bedroom size. So this includes, you know, our actual, you know, BHP units as well as our tenant based vouchers. And then on the right side, this is a snapshot of what the market has really been providing lately. So this is from the Boulder County Assessor's Office. So you know, what you'll see here, both, I think, BHP and the market, were primarily providing the one and two beds, really meeting demand where it is. Where you'll see, you know, the big difference is that BHP in our portfolio, we do have more of the larger units than what the market is providing. I think that's that's very intentional because, you know, I think as a housing authority, you look at that data and it's clear, demand is really strong for smaller units, but it's also, it's not zero for, you know, two, three bedroom units either. Whereas, you know, I think what we've seen a lot of from the market side is, you know, they're they're looking at the same data we are. But the the response there has been to primarily build only one and two bedroom units because that's where, you know, we see about 70% of our renters are. So I think, you know, this is just BHP wanting to show that we're we're also trying to meet those folks where they are and provide that that housing as well. So. Great. And then if no questions here, Laura, I think the next slides are PSH, which is maybe back to you.
All right, so we're almost there. Thanks for hanging in there with us.
Great. And Laura, I'll just say, I know you have to leave in about 18 minutes, so.
Actually, the soccer game's not going so well. So my my other obligation is balancing my personal life with my daughter's soccer game at Boulder High School, so.
Let us know if you want us to ask any final questions for you specifically.
I can probably stay a little bit longer too, David. And so permanently supportive housing, Jay talked about this a little bit. It's certainly been a topic of conversation in the city for a long time. And I think it's something that we've also seen prioritized with, you know, the city trying to find solutions that are, you know, trying to get folks off the streets, out of shelters and into more permanent solutions. There's a number of ways that we're going about that. So we're sort of talking about it from the side of the producer and Jay earlier was talking about it from the side of the funder. You know, there's things like Lee Hill, which is our permanently supportive housing property at the corner of Lee Hill and Broadway. So up in North Boulder, 31 units, that's been around now for about eight years and is doing really, really well. That according to our partner Greg Harms over at the shelter, you know, that's a great solution for many people, but it's not the solution for all people exiting homelessness. So there's also a solution that works well for for others is to be integrated into a larger community. And so, for example, at 30 Pearl, I mentioned, we have 10 units of permanently supportive housing that will have services coming in partnered from the shelter. And those are just blended into the building and sort of not identified in any way other than just, you know, it's a unit that has this service attachment to it and a voucher. When we acquire property, often we will set aside priority or preference for and a resident who's been, who is exiting homelessness. And so recent purchases by BHP have set aside a number of units to to meet those needs. And then we also have work with the city for, and this is not in the development side of things or the acquisition side, but we are administering dedicated local funds, dedicated city funds to house people exiting homelessness with a local voucher. So not just a, this is augmenting federal resources for this housing trade voucher program. These resources are coming from the city and those are really been successful as well. And it comes again with wraparound services in this front, in this instance, from Shelter for the Homeless. Questions on on these different tactics on how I how to help address homeless issues in the city?
I don't see hands, so.
Then then last slide, and this one, I think, could help address, you know, this is very hypothetical and we can, don't need to get hung up on on exactly the numbers here. But but this is really trying to demonstrate the struggle for creating that three bedroom, two bath, single family home in the city. And so this is just trying to give you a snapshot of why that is a product type that is challenging to produce for homeownership. So on this, this left side here, looking at sort of a total development cost of $580,000. You've got some land, you've got infrastructure entitlements, your financing costs, $380,000 to construct, so a total of $580,000 here. Again, there's there's levers we can pull here to manipulate this. But this is, you know, what a very efficient bill could look like here in Boulder. And then over here is you have what people will qualify for under the existing homeownership, affordable homeownership programs. And so at 120% of AMI, you qualify at 516,000 or that's how much you would qualify to to purchase. 431, it's, you know, it goes down by AMI levels here. And then over here, you can see where the gaps are for producing that kind of housing. So I'm not saying it's not doable. I am just saying that there are certainly challenges to being able to provide that product type. And I think, you know, this is just providing a little bit of of insight into that. I will say that we are working on a homeownership project at the moment to see about its viability and and we hope to bring that forward sometime in the next year. So it's but it's a challenge and it's it's something that is, it's just hard in the city where land cost is really expensive, so.
Right, I see our questions starting, Georgie.
Yeah, what would, thank you for this, super helpful. What would this is, what would this look like as an attached townhome rather than a quote unquote, single family home? Or is that what this is?
So I I mean, it would be similar based on, I mean, probably less if it's attached, certainly. If you're starting to stack, it would be less, but that's not the product type I think that we've heard is desired. So if you are doing a duplex, that's side by side or a triplex or fourplex or something like that versus a single family home, your fluctuation is is going to be in how many units you can get on a piece of land. So it would, your variable would be land cost most likely. So if you are able to get more units in there through doing duplexes, then maybe your land cost goes down some and you can bring that cost down a bit. With a shared party wall, of course, you're going to have a little bit of efficiency with your build type and build costs. So, you know, you might see a bit. I I don't want to project on how much exactly that would be. I haven't put a pencil to it, but.
Yeah, I'd be I'd be curious to, I mean, not for now, but you don't have that. But I just like be curious to understand what the differences might look like. Because I think that would be interesting. Thank you.
And that might be actually something we could even think to have data for in our retreat because it kind of moves into that moderately. Well, Lisa.
Yeah, so kind of continuing on the the middle income or moderate income. And of course, as as we see people's salaries go up and as we see the cost of housing go up, not only in Boulder, but across the range in the US, the thresholds for that also increase. But I I a perception I hold, and I'd like to hear from staff, especially before you guys have to go, if this is correct, is that although we can always do better and we have goals to hit that we're not hitting yet, then in many ways, BHP Affordable Housing do quite a good job of providing, compared to other cities, compared to other municipalities, do a great job of providing that low to kind of moderate income rentals, especially, you know, one or two bedroom unit, which is what most people want in that rental range. And then kind of where where we struggle, and I think this is why we picked it for a retreat topic, is perhaps as as those same people or other people in our community rise more into that moderate to middle income housing, that there's pressures from all sides. So we don't have the best tools to finance those through BHP or other means. Additionally, the market is not incentivized to provide those. In fact, it's incentivized to build either luxury product or multiple units. Is that a fair perception that that's kind of the spot where we're most squeezed?
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, so in this instance, where we're looking at these these gaps here, there isn't a source of equity to come in and fill that gap, right? So the tax credit program doesn't extend into this homeownership world. So 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 there's not a great source of equity for us to be able to go and do it. And then, as you suggest, quite quite wisely, that, yeah, the market is not going to be driven to do this because they're not going to want to, you know, build something and then put a covenant on it where they can't sell it for what it costs them to build it, right? But it's not impossible. We're we're trying really hard, so we'll hopefully be back in front of you one of these days with the with a great project that you can take a look at.
Laura, before you depart for the the less than happy soccer game. So I think what none of us wants to do is throw up our hands and say, okay, so we can only build low to moderate income and super high income housing. And that our Boulder Valley Comp Plan goals are very, very clear that that we have these objectives about housing diversity and meeting the needs of different incomes, income and and employees, et cetera, et cetera. This is a little bit outside, just telling us what BHP is doing. But as someone who's an expert in the in the field of housing development, what are some of the ways that you think we should be thinking about how to fill in that gap? But how to create, how to incent, how to make incentives that would help address that gaping hole? fill in that gap, but how to create, how to incent, how to make incentives that would help address that gaping hole?
Yeah, I mean, it's a great question and it's hard. I, I mean, I do think there's, you know, a variety of ways to do it, it's not always going to be the most popular. I do think there's, there's land use issues that we can look at to, you know, again, create that diversity of housing typology that would be, you know, create options within the city. We already have a vast majority of our zoning in the city is single-family homes. So money, for lack of a better way to put it, is, is a way that we could maybe tap into existing communities within, in our town to, to keep people here. It just, it just takes a tremendous amount of money and then it becomes a values question. Is that money best spent on one house and one family being able to live here affordably? Or is that money better spent on producing thirty units in a different location? I don't have an answer to that, but, but I do think that, you know, there are ways that we can tackle it. I think it's, it's multifaceted in terms of a solution. In terms of incentivizing developers to do that, it, that's really challenging as well. I mean, we, we have mechanisms in place to have them pay in or have them develop onsite, but there isn't a, a great tool that I'm come up with to tell a market-rate developer how to pencil their pro forma in a way that would make them lose money. So I, it's, I, I just, I don't know, especially with land values as high as they are in town. And not, not a lot of, not a lot of places that we can actually do those, you know, townhouses or single-family, small, single-family homes. It's pretty limited. I know that we have the cities by the planning reserve. I, I mean, I think there's, there's land, but it, we just, you know, is, is that, again, a values question for our community as to how we, do we develop it or do we not develop it?
Yeah, and, yeah, we might have some pretty interesting ahhs in the retreat on that. John, would you like to?
Yeah, thank you. Thanks, very interesting presentation. I wonder if you could opine on the relative benefits of vouchers versus the construction of, and operation of buildings by older housing partners? Because BHP does both, and I've never seen any sort of a evaluation of the pros and cons of, of each approach.
That's a great question. I, I mean, I think it's, again, the more options you provide to the community and to an individual to have choice, the better. So some people may not want to have to go and, and source a place to live after they've gone through the work to attain, you know, to the top of the list, so to speak, and they just want to move into someplace and they want it. Maybe the location is right for a house that Boulder Housing Partners actually owns and manages. The real benefit to the Housing Choice Voucher Program is it's ultimate choice, you know? And so that voucher holder can go and live anywhere. And, you know, I think the intent of that program from when it was created was to, again, blend in, utilize market-rate housing and sort of create this public-private partnership. And I think that that's really valuable. I, I think it's very personal to people. Do they want to live in a property that is a hundred percent affordable? Or would they rather go and, and look for a place that could be a little more anonymous perhaps with that affordability status, so to speak? So, um, so I don't know that we've actually ever done as a housing authority, a pro-con. I think we just look at it as a tool in the toolbox and sometimes it works best for some people and, and a property works better for others, so.
I guess what I'm, what I'm wondering is to what degree the city should be interested in participating directly in the voucher program along with the, the federal government and so on? As opposed to focusing its efforts on, on the construction and operation of projects?
That would be a question I'd leave to the city. I will say that they have invested with the voucher program and we have a dedicated source of funds from the city for a permanently supportive housing prioritized list. So we have now a local voucher program that's been created by the city. BHP administers those dollars and it's set aside or directed completely at individuals exiting homelessness. So that does exist, it's very specific on the population being served, but, you know, there's a good source of data as to success and how that's worked well for this particular population. And maybe that could be something they consider to expand, yeah.
Well, thank you.
I, just to add from sort of the city's perspective, I, I think I understand what you're saying is, well, what if the city just subsidized market rate rent for households throughout Boulder, right?
That's right.
It's sort of a question, you know, what is the priority? And how do you spend scarce resources? So I think from my perspective, the way I would think about it is, instead of using that, those dollars to subsidize market rate rents, we would rather spend that money to produce a permanently affordable unit that's going to be there in perpetuity. So it's sort of one-time subsidizing the market versus providing that asset that we can retain, oh, you know, in perpetuity. Does that, does that make sense?
Oh, sure, I, and I think that, that is a very important analysis. It's just interesting to, to have it explicitly understood.
Great. Other, other questions? All right. Well, I guess that was the last slide, so we, I mean, certainly take another passive questions if people have them, but Laura, Ian and Jay, that was fantastic. I've, I learned a lot from it. I will say that the idea of levers came up and we talked about funding sources. And so, you know, I think that this board is very interested in promoting additional ways that we can, under the state and federal law, get more revenue for these kinds of things. So if, if those things come before us, I think we'd be really interested in seeing them. We have put recommendations into our annual council letter on this, that we're looking for more levers. So I think that I could, you know, certainly say that I've felt a lot of support for those kinds of things on the board should they come up. So always, always looking. Sarah, go ahead.
So, um, I, I've realized what I've been struggling with in terms of these charts that Ian shared with us. What's the total, like, what is the, not what might the need be in ten years and not what was the need ten years ago? But what is the, what is the need right now? For, you have percentages of what demand is, but, but there's no, what's the pie? Is it, are there, you know, we have a population of a hundred and eight thousand, is that right, a hundred and eight thousand people? What percentage of, of those are eligible, would be eligible for BHP housing?
That, boy, that was that, that second table I showed, I think, is, is, is probably the table that would make sense there, Laura, I don't know.
Did that share?
Yep, I think it's slide fifteen there is the.
That's still a percentage.
So the total there, that's, that's about fifty-six, sixty-eight. Sarah, that, those are, those are absolute numbers you're seeing there. Yeah. And so this, this excludes, this table excludes people earning less than forty percent AMI, because this was done for a specific unit mix that we were proposing, but you can see at that forty, fifty, sixty percent AMI. Those are basically the total number of eligible renters in the Boulder market at those income levels. So the, the total that would qualify is, is greater than that, because this is excluding that less than forty percent number. But it gives you at least an idea.
Okay, so you, can you guys take us? I mean, you know your market better than anybody, what's the number of below forty percent AMI?
My and Laura, you know, jump in here. My guess is it's significant. I think you looked at our median income that we're serving across our portfolio and it was about fifteen thousand dollars a year. So that is firmly in that thirty percent AMI range. So I don't know if it's, it's probably not double this number, but it's, you know, my guess is it's another three or four thousand households, pure, pure guess based on that, but.
I would agree.
Households, okay.
Households, yeah, so I would say we're approaching about ten thousand, just based on these numbers. These are from probably early twenty nineteen is when this data is, is from.
And, but that doesn't mean, I just want, I'm sorry, I'm just trying to, it's a, you know, as Mark Twain says, there's lies, damn lies, and statistics. So I'm just trying to understand sort of the, the, the statistics here. Those who are eligible are not necessarily unhoused. They might be housed not in BHP housing, they might be in market-rate affordable, meaning especially for the below forty percent, they might be in the manufactured home neighborhoods. So this is, this is a number that would qualify, but that doesn't mean that, okay.
That, that's right, so yeah, these, it says nothing about their current housing today as this. So they could be, yeah, living in, you know, unrestricted affordable apartment, or they could be paying seventy percent of their income towards rent, just because that's what they're doing to get by. This is really just household income, household, household size by income that would qualify for affordable housing.
And can you, can you give us any sense of how much larger or smaller this number is from ten years ago or fifteen years ago? Or maybe it has to be a percentage of population? I'm just, I'm trying to, I would love to sort of contextualize it.
You know, I don't, I don't know, that, that, that is super interesting. I, I definitely understand that's how that would be valuable. You know, I think if I were to say anecdotally, we, we have not seen any decrease in demand. So, but, you know, the, the percent that would qualify, I don't think is shrinking necessarily in Boulder.
But I, I was, I was actually thinking that it has been increasing over time versus. So I'm trying to understand what that trajectory, is it a flat line or is it a trajectory of some kind?
So I think as we've seen Boulder have an increase in our area median income, we have seen more and more people qualify because, you know, a certain, the skewing of that area median income with high-income residents moving into town would then have more people qualify because of the discrepancy of the, the few are getting the number higher than what the income levels are increasing at that lower sort of maybe a service level type of position. So I, I do think that that's a nut that we can crack for you, Sarah, and we can get some information over to you and try and get you some trend lines as to what we've seen. But given the increase, dramatic increase, I would say, in area median income, I would be able to, with some confidence, but we'll caveat that, that we'll check into it and say that that, that pool has grown.
So that's, that would be, if it's not a huge burden on you guys, that would be really, really interesting.
Yeah, no problem, we'll, we'll take that, take that on, no problem.
Thank you.
Yeah.
All right, I'm John, go ahead.
Yeah, I'd be interested to learn what sort of vacancy rates you have under present conditions. I'm just looking at your webpage and I see, you know, I don't know, maybe fifteen notices of fifteen or twenty apartments that are now available. And that doesn't seem like much, but I don't know if that's typical or, or how long these take to get rented. So I'd be interested to learn about that.
Yeah, so we have, we generally operate in that like ninety-seven to ninety-eight percent occupancy rate. So our, our vacancy rates are pretty, very low. We've also moved away from a model of having these very long waiting lists. And so we do sort of a point-in-time marketing, the way a private marketing. Can I stop showing my screen so I can see?
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah. So the, yeah, the, so fifteen is probably about right. I, I think that, you know, during COVID, we did not see a lot of increase in vacancy. And we're seeing a little bit more movement now. And I also think that, you know, the leasing process has been a little bit challenged, but now that we're getting back to more normal sort of quasi-post-pandemic times, it's, it's a little bit easier to show units and then people are more interested in, in moving to, you know, locations that are new. The, the fifteen units, I'd say, is probably of our, you know, sixteen-hundred-ish portfolio, relatively small.
Oh, thank you.
All right. Well, anything else we want to discuss tonight? Are we, I would have actually offered up a break, but I thought, well, if with that eight o'clock time coming, we could probably push through. So thanks for being, you know, cooperating with that kind of long two-hour session.
Yeah, I really appreciate the time tonight. I think, you know, there's some questions, I feel like I babbled a little bit, Georgie. I feel like I can get some better information to you if you're interested regarding that density versus scaling question. And then Sarah will follow up on that trend line regarding number of people that would be qualifying for the affordable housing. Is there any other follow-up that we can help with post-meeting?
Let's see. Do we have any other specific ones that we'd like to see?
I think, I think Ian was just gonna, I think Ian was just gonna double-check if the rental housing market data included students or not, the, the first of the, of the graphs you showed us, just to double-check.
Yeah, I'll double-check that one, great. Awesome.
John, how about your question about the criteria for the city's funding decisions? Are, are you still interested in that, or did you get a sense from Laura's presentation?
I'd be very interested to hear Laura's comments on that. Thanks for mentioning that.
Yeah. Yeah, no, we do, we compete. I think, you know, my experience with the housing division and competing for funds is that they're, they have a separate entity called the Technical Review Committee, or Technical Review Group, TRGs, that makes those decisions. And, you know, I think they're looking at very similar things as to what a TFA application would altogether. So usually those things will kind of go hand-in-hand. They look at how deep the affordability is, so are we getting below sixty percent of AMI regularly? Or with the unit configurations that we're suggesting and the AMIs associated with that. I, I think that's a, that's a big one for them. And then special needs populations, I think, would be another piece of that consideration. If we're looking at permanently supportive housing, for example, I think that's a very high priority and has been for a while. And so that would also be something that they would look to fund. And I also just, it's, it's opportunistic, so, you know, I think it, you know, when there are good opportunities, for example, to buy an apartment complex, you know, they're looking to, you know, help out in those instances so that we can, you know, capture those opportunities before they get swept away into, into the market.
I also put in the, the toolkit of housing options that came out of the twenty-fifteen Housing Boulder Initiative, that's in the chat. But that's definitely worth a perusal, because I know you had the questions about what can we really do to address our affordable housing challenges? And, you know, just to reiterate, I mean, this has been an issue in Boulder for decades. And there have been comprehensive housing strategies, there have been task force, you know, put together. Lots of time and effort has gone into trying to crack this nut. And that's sort of a list of all the possible options that have been explored to date. So that might be helpful to peruse as well.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think when I started with planning board four years ago, that, a little over four years ago, we were like in the seven-point-five percent range. And it's kind of nice to look at that graph with the lines getting, it's a little bit closer together. So it's, it's very rewarding to see progress in this, so.
Yeah, I have to say the partnership with the city and I. Yeah, I have to say the partnership with the city and I, I do want to just say a thank you to Jay and the, the housing team and the planning staff and, and of course, planning board. But there has been, I think, a great synergy between those parties and the housing authority. And we've been able to really start to dramatically move that dial. And we're seeing good production coming about from that of really quality, high quality, good location housing for the city. So that's exciting.
Charles, you want to join in and wrap it up for us?
I just wanted to thank everybody for spending the time to have this conversation tonight. And Laura, Ian, Jay, I know it involved a lot of preparation, so really appreciated. I hope that the board found it helpful.
Thank you.
Follow up with a couple of questions that are out there lingering and really appreciate the continued partnership, Laura and Ian. I would agree. I think the, the outputs are significant and, you know, the quality of the housing that you guys are continuing to develop in the community is fantastic. So thanks very much again for the opportunity to have the conversation.
Thank you, Chris.
Great. So with that, I will just go ahead and we do have a debrief and calendar check on our schedule, but thanks so much, Laura. Thanks, anybody who's not on the board and, and I guess Charles, you can stay with us as we do this. But I actually, without Cindy, there's probably, and we have another meeting in a week. I think we did a pretty extensive calendar check last week.
Sure.
So I don't know if there's any updates that you have, Charles.
No, no updates. Just next week, June third will be the board's conversation about phase two of community benefits. So that's the only thing that'll be on the agenda. I would imagine that'll be a pretty detailed conversation. We'll have our consultants from Kaiser Marston there to help speak to some of the data that's been compiled, but we really look forward to having the conversation with the board. Other than that, no other new additions to the calendar or any other matters from staff.
Lisa?
Yeah, I already let Cindy know, but I anticipate being a little bit late next week. I don't think there's anything I'll need to vote on right out of the gate. And again, Cindy's aware, but I expect that I'll probably join sometime between six thirty and seven. So just heads up for other members that I'll be a little late next week, unless I get it resolved. Still trying.
Okay, John?
I, I was sorry to miss last week's session, but I just wondered, I, I saw on the agenda that, that Hella had proposed that a couple temporary board members be appointed to deal, help deal with CU South.
Oh, yes.
And, and I just wondered what the status of that was. I wasn't able to see the video or, or the notes from that meeting. And so that's what I wanted to inquire about.
Good timing. Helen and I just had a conversation about this and I can even provide some additional information. Helen, did you want to start?
Yeah, last week, we asked the board if the board asked for appointment of additional board members to avoid the possibility that the board is not able to act. If only four or five members are there because you need four votes to pass any motion for or against. And the board, it was only four board members who could participate because two of you were recused, but the board voted to unanimously to ask for appointment of those board members. And my next step is to approach the mayor together with David Enzine. And I'm, I'm still working on whether we actually need to go to council or if the mayor can appoint those themselves. So that's going to be the next step. And David, I'll let you speak to what, what you have done in addition.
Sure. So Helen said that as chair, that I could follow the city's procedures for approaching former board members to be alternates. So the city has us going backwards in order of folks who have rotated off the board. Harmon, I talked to him. He's confirmed that he is still in a recused state. So we know that. I am waiting to hear back from Brian Bowen, who is the previous person. I suspect he might be eligible and not have recusal. I talked to Liz, Liz Putnam.
Peyton.
Gosh, that was a moment. Two P names. Yes, Liz Peyton and Liz is still working for Seres and as a result would, would have to recuse, which is kind of a disappointment because Liz has a lot of hydrology expertise. So I wish that weren't the case, but I spoke with, also with Crystal Gray and she is available. So if things go well, we'll probably put in that request that Sam consider Brian Bowen and Crystal Gray as the alternates to be asked to join us on the twenty-second of July.
So I, I just wanted to ask, I, I think that seems like a reasonable procedure, but I just wanted to ask, is this laid out somewhere in the city charter that this is how this question is dealt with, that it's only former planning board members who are eligible for this?
Yeah, we have a code section that allows for the appointment of alternate board members. And then the, I think it's the city council procedures that set forth who may be appointed and, and how.
Not specific.
Yep, it specifies former board members and that you go down, go backwards for, you know, you, you appoint the most recently departed member of the board who's eligible and able to participate in the item.
Not doing well. Thank you. Just wanted to catch up on that.
As you go back through those members, you get more and more people who were in the room when we put the guiding principles in the comp plan. So even if we went one more, John Putnam was on the board when we, when we did the guiding principles. So we're getting people in the room who are actually maybe have some insights when, you know, into that update to the comp plan. So we have that kind of advantage that this algorithm asks for that, which I thought was kind of cool. Yeah. Oh, and concerning, just while we're on DB calendar check on the retreat, we have a pretty good agenda to share, but I'll do that in matters next week. I'm working with all the speakers to, they have like, yes, and everybody's reading their book. I'm working with all the speakers to make sure that they know all of the things that everybody brought up that they would like discussed. So like some of the detailed questions will appear on kind of the planning sheet and the agenda will be a little bit more general than that. But the staff is aware of all of the questions in each of the categories that people submitted. All right. Anything else from Charles or Hella or any other board members? Excellent. Great. Well, this one didn't go till midnight. And I, I, I do know that repeated again, thank you so much for joining us. I, I know that things are rough schedule wise. So, and it's two hours later there. So, so much appreciated. So good night, everybody, and we'll see you in a week.
Thanks so much. I thank you.
Thanks all.